Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do not.
I could get a motion to approve the agenda submitted or amended?
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the regular meeting on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five?
Aye. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the following cassette agenda, three point one through four point one, the treasures reports, consideration of claims, transportation report, cafeteria report, and the extracurricular co-curricular advisors.
I'll move.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This brings us to five point O, our district presentation, so I will turn it over to Madison and Ida Boses for Scott and Lisa.
Where would you like us?
Right here.
Thanks for having us. I'm Scott Woodelman, district superintendent, Madison Ida Boses, and this is Lisa Decker. She's the deputy superintendent, and she's going to pass out some folders.
Thank you, Lisa.
So as has been the case in the past, I've had to talk to you a little bit about the Boses, the way we structured some of our programs at the offer, and then Lisa will walk you through our proposed administrative budget. So if you take a look at your folder on the right-hand side, you can see an organization chart. Boses has set up their senior school districts, they were little there with them in school districts, but similar. You can see in the center there you've got the superintendent, district superintendent, that's me, Scott Woodelman. And then there's also a instructional leader, that's Matt Williams. So he's very similar to your instructional leader. And then Lisa Decker's on the management side. She's a district superintendent for finance operations, similar to Mr. Crump, for example. The difference between a school's assistant superintendent and a Boses assistant superintendent is there's some regional responsibilities in addition to just the Boses responsibilities. And then also we have a third role. Heather Mahoney is the director, the executive director of the RIC, the Regional Information Center, which provides technology services to fifty school districts in the area. The other difference is my role is sort of bifurcated. I report directly to the commissioner, which means at least once a month I'm in Albany sort of working with her and rolling out information to folks like Mr. Dowsland. I also do superintendent searches, and there are a lot of other sort of similar roles that a district superintendent plays, so that's a little bit different. On the other side, I'm the superintendent of the Boses, and that function is very similar to a school district. So if you look at the next document, kind of think of this as a sort of progress and force document. You can see on the first side, the top line talks about taxes. At the word appointed, Boses does not have the power of levying taxes, so we don't have any tax revenue. Next line says state aid, we also cannot receive state aid. So the primary source of our funding is from school districts. So school districts decide to sign up for services, or they do not decide to sign up for services, and that's our primary source of revenue. You can see the next line, we do not maintain a general fund balance. That's one way that we differ from the school districts. So any of the money that we take in from school districts, at the end of the year is not utilized, it goes back to school districts. On it's, we have the same audit requirements as the school districts. And then staffing at the bottom, we're a little bit different than the school district in that we staff up according to demand each year. So if the service grows, we staff up, and if it shrinks, we staff down, or more, we shift staff around, so we tend to have more layoffs in hiring than a school district typically would. On the other side of this document describes how we put services together. So basically, we're only really permitted to do things we're asked to do, right? Only when two or more school districts come together and say, we would like you to provide a service, we provide that service. If we're not asked, we don't do it, in fact, we're not allowed to do it. So we're consumer-driven. School districts, as I said, independently decide what services to purchase and which services to not purchase. Every May first of each year, Mr. Dowsland and his team will make decisions, you know, to what extent they want to share, and to what extent you want to do things alone. Sometimes it makes sense to do things alone, and sometimes your priorities shift from your ear. So we're market-driven, right? Not like a school district, where we have to respond to demand, but we have no profit incentive because we don't, you know, we don't profit from our work. If you turn to the next document, it's our partnerships document, and this is specific to Hamilton. You can see at the top of it, secondary programs description. The director of secondary programs is James, so we've organized our Boses similar to a high school, middle school, and elementary school. This is something we did a few years ago. But if you drop down partly through the document, you can see some of the statistics specific to Hamilton. So you can see the class of two thousand and twenty-four, the completion rate, that's the equivalent of our graduation rate. You can see eleven students completing the two-year pathway, ten of them received a technical endorsement, and two students were in divisions. And then just below that, you can see the placement rate for those students. So these are Hamilton graduates who participated in CTE. Forty-seven percent of them are pursuing secondary education, or post-secondary education. Fifty percent are employed related to their CTE program, twenty-three percent employed unrelated, and fifteen percent military. On the right-hand side, you can see this year's current data. We have forty-one students in career and technical education, and two students in career exploration. And then the honor roll statistics below that, you've got twenty-two students in high honors, eleven students in honors, and five honorable mention, for a total of thirty-eight kids out of forty-three in the program this year. So pretty, pretty successful rate of participation. And, you know, just below that, you can see the names of the students who are in the Hamilton Technical Honor Society. So we have an honor society program very similar to yours, we call it the Technical Honor Society, six students in that, with that distinction. So turning through this document, I won't walk you all the way through it, but if you look at page three, for example, there's a description of our middle level programs, our middle school. You can see there's a listing of the programs that your students are enrolled in. And then moving to the next page, page four, description of our elementary programs. Our elementary programs have grown significantly in the last seven years. I think we've opened six classrooms in the last two years, just in elementary programs alone. And then at the top of the next page, staff and curriculum development. This is the service that we provide to teachers for professional development. Becky Cox is the director of that program. And then just below that, Sue LeBlanc is the director of the Center for Instructional Support. Turning to page seven, public information and printing. This is Softman Kalali and Don Philhauer. And at the bottom of that, the Regional Information Center. Heather Mahoney is the director of that program. I'll talk to you about that more later. And then school board policy development, we have in-house school attorneys that can provide you with policy services, labor relations services, and I would say in-house legal assistance. I would suggest you leave your outside counsel behind, but there's some work that you can do in-house, and we have some attorneys that can assist with that. And then business office services, finally on page nine, Giovanna Anatone is our director of business office services. Mr. Crump participates in that, those services. The next document is our participation list, basically just gives you all the services that you currently participate in, without a description, just a line-by-line script link. And then after that, our student spotlight. So we have five students highlighted here at Hamilton. I won't go through their information. You can read it on your own, looks like two siblings, but just some of the students that are participating in Boses from Hamilton. On the next page, you can see our program at MBCC. They have a partnership with MBCC, so students can graduate from Hamilton Central School District, they get a CTE completion certificate from Boses, and at the same time also complete here at MB. So they're here into their associate's degree by the time they graduate from high school. And then turning onto the next page, you can see we've developed a similar, I guess it's another postcard. We've developed a similar program to New Morrisville, so something growing for folks in this region. Mr. Dowsland's been part of putting that together, some great opportunities there. And then on the next page, a full-page document, you can see a listing of where all of our programs are in the region. You may have heard from the commissioner and the state education department, this idea of regionalization. And you may have heard that some folks downstate, for example, aren't exactly thrilled about regionalization. Up here, whether we use the word or not, we've been partnering for a long time with school districts, and we've been attempting to push our programs closer to where students live, so CTE can be available to everybody. And I think you can see from this listing, we've been pretty successful in developing those partnerships. So Boses is really everywhere, but nobody really sees it, because it's really the school districts partnering together, and I suppose that's what it is. Turning to the next document, it's actually a book. I think I've watched you through this for probably a year. This is a listing of all our CTE programs available. Sometimes we have a few extra, and we have some extra available where books want them. If you turn to the first page, for example, or just go up to one program, Advanced Culinary Experience. So one of our popular programs is culinary, and we have Culinary One and Culinary Two, but we also have Advanced Culinary Experience, where students are really interested, they're studying culinary arts. And the whole book is set up the same way, but you can see how this works. Basically, at the top, under the overview, the qualifications are, you have to have excellent attendance, a minimum GPA, you have to demonstrate consistent, dependable work ethic and professionalism. And then just below that, you can see the units of study that students will receive, and food service equipment, introduction to baking, stock soups and sauces, nutritional science, meat, poultry and seafood, desserts and baked goods, food service math, and then career options below that, and also course credits, so students earn three units of CTE, one unit of each of English, twelve math, and science, a unit of government and economics, a happy unit in career and financial management. You can see that the endeavor is work-based learning, you get, receive a technical endorsement, and there are industry credentials that go along with this course of study. And then all the colleges below that have articulation agreements for this program. So there are many, many programs offered through Boses CTE. You can see them in the book. Encourage you to look through several, but you know, there's criminal art, I'm sorry, criminal justice, culinary arts, children's childhood, carpentry, electronics, heavy equipment, HVAC, a lot of options for kids. So you have a chance to look at that. Next document, double site, is just a listing of our dual enrollment programs available at Boses, so this is where you can get college course credit, particularly high school classes through Boses. And then a brochure about RIC services. So I talked to you a little bit about the RIC before. So there are thirty-seven Boses in the state, thirty-seven of Scott Woodelman's. Most school districts are associated with Boses, but of those thirty-seven Boses, only twelve of them are RICS. So again, that word, regionalism, the RIC is the Regional Information Center, so it's been, Boses have been sort of cooperating with one another for a long time, and in particular, through the Regional Information Center. So our RIC, your Boses has a RIC, it's one of the twelve. It actually provides services to four different Boses in fifty schools, which is not just the nine components of the United Boses. Our RIC director is, as statewide leader, Heather Mahoney, so we have a great resource very close to Hamilton. And the next, business services. Our director of business services is Giovanna Anatone. And you can see the listing of different services that are provided. Mr. Crump, you know, makes decisions each year about to what he wants to participate in, be involved with, just for some back office assistance with business services. After that, labor relations and policies, we have a policy service that attorneys have put together, we also have labor relations service, so that's union relations, also low level, I would say, in-house legal work. On the back of that document, you can see the just the staff that's available to you through that service. We also have a school communication service. And all these, again, as I described, these are things you decide whether to participate in or not every year by May first. Softman Kalali is the director of our school communication service. And then after that, a listing of the staff and curriculum development offerings for this winter. So our staff development team, these are the fully trained teachers, provide regional trainings, bring in outside consultants, and that's just a listing for the winter of two thousand and twenty-five opportunities for teachers. And then after that, and on the back, I can see the staff development team. Becky Cox is our new director, she's joined the national job. And then the next document, we haven't shared too often, this is our adult and continuing education catalog. So we're not just involved in K-12 work, this is for adult learners, because you're folks who want to go back to school and learn trade, or maybe get a GED. So this is a little bit different than K-12, right? Because the consumers themselves are actually purchasing classes, right? It's not just the tax base that's providing opportunity for learning, these are actually people who have to purchase. And you're generally talking about people who have a lot of means, and so it's a struggle to keep that program together, but we keep it together for the community. We partner with United Boses on that program, so it's part of an association. There's a couple of members of our board, and a couple of members of the United Boses board that govern that. And so it's just something I thought I'd highlight here. It also relates to workforce development, so we try to target, you know, employment opportunities for adults, in terms of workforce development. And then finally, after that, listening, I'm sorry, on the other side of your folder, I guess on the right side, left side, left side, two postcards, same date. The first is our annual meeting, April ninth. Thank you for coming, and we hope you come again. This is where we have local kids provide entertainment, I think very local this year doing entertainment, right?
Yes, our jazz band.
Hamilton will be there, yes.
Yep.
So it's your turn to do the entertainment, that'll be great. We'll have kids from all over the place doing culinary, as we have in the past, should be fun, April ninth. And then a year from this, this year, our theme for the annual meeting, not this year, but next year, will be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States, you know, time to celebrate all the progress we've made, all the progress that you still have to make. And then a year from this annual meeting, so. That's the quick program overview. If you have any questions about that, I'll take them. If not, I'll let you still walk you through the budget.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. So also on the left-hand side of your folder, you'll see the proposed administrative and capital budget for Boses for the upcoming year. So on the blue paper, that's our administrative budget, and similar to your administrative budget, this includes salary fringe benefits and expenses for central office staff and business office staff. There's some line items for supplies, software, travel, board expenses, meetings, mileage, and any professional development, or board, or business officer, central office staff. Our auditors are included in this, in this budget as well. Regionally, we are members of the school boards association, the council for school superintendents, the association of school business officials, Marasta, rural schools. And then this year, we are adding the statewide school finance consortium into the budget for next year. So the statewide school finance consortium is led by Dr. Rick Timm, who's a retired superintendent, retired district superintendent, and he really digs deep into the data for schools as far as, he's very versed in foundation aid formula, and how changes to formulas impact individual districts. And so our superintendents ask for that resource to be added as a regional option as well. Contractionally, we have an actuarial study, our IRS compliance, banking fees, the online application system, and school boards' constitution. Legal fees are included in this budget, as well as a line item for our superintendents' regional meetings and professional development. And then you'll see a line item for postage and advertising for those legal notices required. And then on the bottom of that page, you'll see interim charges. So just as you utilize services for Boses, this budget pays its share of items such as the policy and labor relations service, flex plan administration, and software support for the business office. So for those direct expenses, you'll see the twenty-four, twenty-five current budget is one million, seven oh two, three forty-three. Proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six is one million, seven seventy-nine, two eighty-eight. And then on the back side of that page, unlike a school district of Boses, is required to show all of this, the first improvement benefits in the administrative budget. So that's our retiree health insurance expense. We have two hundred and eighty more retirees, we're planning for eighteen more for next year. So you'll see the total administrative budget, including that line item, this year is seven million, two ninety, three twenty-five. For next year, proposed is seven million, four ninety-five, three sixty-five. And then part C, you'll see the revenue sources. So we get interest earnings, indirect costs from grants, our retired drug subsidy reimbursement. And then we also have a collections and advance account, so this is something we set up collaboratively years ago with our superintendents and our auditor, to set aside one year's worth of that op- obligation, retiree health insurance. And that offsets that retiree health insurance, number C in part B. And then finally, the balance is the local component, district contribution. So our nine component districts are contributing one million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars this year. For next year, one million, two hundred and eighty-seven, three oh six. And then down below, you'll see that this is allocated by, in our region, by ARWADA, the resident weighted average daily attendance. So those are attendance figures that are submitted each year by each of the districts to the state education department, and they calculate this ARWADA factor. So regionally, this year, our ARWADA is thirteen thousand, nine oh six. Of that, Hamilton represents five hundred and sixty-nine ARWADA, which translates to a four-point-one percent share. Dollar share this year for Hamilton is fifty thousand, seven seventy-two. The next column, you'll see the estimated aid ratio. So again, this is calculated by the state education department, based on that attendance data as well as property values. So Hamilton has a sixty-two-point-nine percent aid ratio, meaning that we anticipate Hamilton will receive about nineteen thousand, one oh four in Boses aid on those expenses. And that leaves in that estimated local share this year of thirty-one thousand, six sixty-eight. For next year, ARWADA shift, and regionally, we're losing eighty-two ARWADA for Hamilton. Actually picked up some ARWADA this year, so added thirteen ARWADA to five hundred and eighty-two ARWADA. So that changes the percent share to four-point-two percent. Dollar share is fifty-four thousand, one ninety-six. Estimated aid ratio, sixty-two-point-five percent. Estimated Boses aid on that, twenty thousand, seventeen, with an estimated local share of thirty-four thousand, one thirty-seven. Any questions on any of the budget line items or the allocation on the budget? Okay, so I'll just review the capital budget to the green piece of the next sheet, as Mr. Woodelman indicated, we do have classes out in school districts and out in the community. So we have summer school, we have our Stella Center now on North Broad Street site, we have CTE classes embedded in school districts, and we have specialized classes mostly located in VBS, but also in North Broad Street location as well. So we have two elements to that, the budget, the rented space, and we have a committee of superintendents that makes that every year at the rates, and sets those rates for the upcoming year. And then our second piece of this budget is the facilities project, so we have ongoing capital projects to keep up with, safety, security, site upgrades, and so on. So the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, current budget, is one million, eight oh six, five oh nine. Proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six is one million, one million, eight forty-two, six thirty-nine, or two percent change. And then again, that same allocation that was used in the administrative is applied to the capital budget. So again, Hamilton has a four-point-one percent share this year, dollar share of seventy-three nine eighteen. Applying the Boses aid ratio means an estimated local share of twenty-seven, four twenty-four. And then for next year, dollar share, sorry, percent share goes to four-point-two percent, dollar share to seventy-seven, five seventy-six. And after the Boses aid is generated, leaves in that local share of twenty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars. Any questions on the capital budget? We want to see you at the annual meeting, and as Scott mentioned, I do have some CTE booklets in, and I don't like the booklets, so I'll leave them right here if that's okay, if anybody wants to take one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, Scott. See you soon.
Good to see you too.
We will now move to five point two, capital project from King &amp; King Architects.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time. We are, Chad and I are here. This is really a culmination of a fairly lengthy process, and I'll just briefly hit the highlights. I think most of you have been part of this, and at least have seen some, if not all, of our presentations as we've worked through this larger process. So it all began with the building condition survey, which is a requirement of the state education department. That's an opportunity for us as your architects and engineers to go through your buildings and the site, and to really give feedback on the sort of the status and the condition of all your, of all your properties. To particularly look for areas that are of concern, and that should be addressed within a five-year window, is typically the rule of thumb. So we compiled a large list of all the work, filled out the building condition survey process with New York State Education Department. We then moved into what is called the long-range plan, where we roll those items, and then we tried to broaden the view. We think about what other pain points are the district dealing with, whether that's from an educational standpoint, maybe what other programs does the district want to expand? What's working, what's not working here? Kind of like parking is a, is a item, right? Parking, traffic control. So we try to get that broad view of all the things that could be done at the district that makes sense within about a five-year window of time. We compile that into this long document, provide cost estimates for all of it. And I think we've reported back in the past, I think that ended up somewhere in the, I'm just going to have a rough number, in the fifty to sixty million dollar range. We then begin to really look more granular, and start to prioritize that list, and start to really develop what could be the next project at Hamilton Central School, understanding that it's, it's, it's a requirement, it's just a need, like owning your home. There are things that need to be done, and if you ignore it for a long time, the headaches get bigger, right? And so it's really, it's really a good process and routine to get into, to do projects within the district at about a five-year cliff. And that aligns nicely with how the, with how state provides building aid, and the caps that they put on building aid. And so we, we try to be really strategic and help the district align potential work with funding. And so having gone through that whole process, we are here tonight to present to you sort of what has risen to the top, so to say, of all the items, whether they be wish list items, you know, needs, or others. And so with that said, I will start to move through this. So tonight, we want to go through the scope of work, as we call it, those work items. We try to, try to make it a little engaging by doing more photos and words, so we'll give you a, you'll get a tour of the campus here. Again, we want to give you some big picture costs, talk a little bit about building aid, and then again, as I referenced already, the maximum cost allowance, which is that rolling five-year window of building aid. So what that really means is, is the state has a formula, like all formulas from the state, it's pretty confusing and archaic, but we have this formula. It determines your maximum amount of money you could spend within the district that would receive building aid. And so our goal is to really align the work and to maximize your building aid. There are times where some districts go over that, and there are reasons for that, but you'll see in this project, we've been able to align it nicely. We'll talk briefly about timelines, which is, as I mentioned, we're sort of getting to the, I'm going to call it the fourth quarter of this whole process here. And so there's some, we'll talk about next steps, and then jump into questions. And actually, feel free to interrupt as we go here. So we've, we've, we've done something here, and again, if this makes sense, great. If not, it's really, we're just giving you guys ideas and trying to help you organize the process. So what we're calling proposition one really focuses on the actual school building. We have a second proposition, which will then focus on the bus garage, and a lot of, a lot more site work. And so there's strategies to how to align these, and some of it comes down to best sort of understanding the, sort of the priorities of the district, how the community may respond, cost impacts, all of that, tax impact, et cetera. And so again, we're, we're saying one way to organize this is to do a proposition one, followed by a second one. The second one is contingent on the first one passing, so you would never do. So you would never do just the site work and not do what's in the building. But it's a way to give the community a way to, to give some feedback on, um, what, what they feel is the highest priorities. All right, so jumping right into it, um, and, and let me just preface this so I don't just repeat myself a thousand times saying, "This item is worn out, this item is worn out." So, almost everything that we're identifying here are items that are well past their useful life or, um, or are currently experiencing issues. And so your field lighting are one of those items. We're hoping to save the poles and just replace the actual light bulbs, for, uh, an easy term, with LED fixtures. Going on to the baseball field, uh, again, very outdated field. I think you're experiencing a lot of issues there. So we're looking to, um, uh, fix the drainage, which I think is one of the key issues there. So, um, better drainage, new infield, um, grass, and then while we're there, it just makes sense to replace, um, fence and gates, scoreboard, et cetera. To really bring it more in line with where the softball field is already. Your bus loop, an item that was actually in the last project, um, but through budget constraints, um, we just couldn't get to this amount of work. Uh, I think there's all kinds of potholes and, and other issues within the loop. Uh, you can see even, um, Leo was out here taking photos for us, I think in January, in the snow, but you could see, still see all the cracks and, and whatnot in the pavement. So the bus loop is, is definitely, um, passed due, as is the sidewalk particularly. Uh, you can see a lot of cracking going on there. We did do some sidewalk repairs more directly at the front entrance, but the rest of that sidewalk leading out to the street is in, uh, rough shape. So we'll just sort of move our way around the building. Um, the dumpsters really are an eyesore. It's, it's a fairly easy fix to do something to provide some more screening for them, um, and to conceal them in, in, in a, in a better, probably in the same location, but, uh, we'll find a, uh, a way to just clean up that area. A little bit further around from the dumpsters, right next to the greenhouse, is, um, this, uh, maintenance, uh, ramp that goes down into the basement, actually. And, um, I think this is vintage nineteen fifties concrete and construction. And again, you've done more than your money's worth. It, it is in very rough shape. Um, there's all kinds of issues with water actually coming into the building as it comes down this ramp. The, the drains at the, the overhead door are not catching up the water, and so it's, it's an issue. There is a series of at least four doors around the building where you have steps still. And so, um, it's, uh, it's ideal to address all of these, um, entrances and exits, uh, so that all of them are handicap accessible. Particularly in an emergency setting where, where, um, someone could be trying to leave from this area of the building. Um, they should have free access out into the site and not have to negotiate these, uh, these old steps. Looking at the windows and, and for any of you who have been around all the way back to the last project, we, I, I specifically remember we walked around the building and pointed out that, um, the windows and what we call curtain wall or storefront systems, which is really the entire, um, aluminum frame system. So not only the, the clear glass window that you see in these photos, but even the, the white panel. All of this is, uh, well past its useful life, um, and we, uh, we recommend replacing it. It's an opportunity to, um, put new windows in that are more energy efficient, making rooms more comfortable. Um, we're also aligning it, you'll see in a few slides, we'll talk about, um, the HVAC system, systems, and you'll see that there's a lot of louvers built right into these windows. So we're trying to strategically align work both inside and outside where it makes sense. And so replacing the windows and the mechanical systems at the same time. Particularly in the elementary wings, meaning, uh, the primary wing and then the third through fifth grade wing, which I don't know if there's another term for that wing, but it's what we always call it. So those are the two wings we're looking at. It's, it's also an opportunity to put windows back in and include screens, so that, um, I think there's areas of buildings without screens, and so you have insects and whatnot coming in, et cetera. So that's, um, as far as facade treatment, it's really these window systems. And when you, when you leave and you, and you look at that primary wing, it's pretty much the whole facade. And so it's a great opportunity, while doing this, there's no additional cost, but it's a great opportunity to sort of rethink, um, what the outside of the building could look like and modernize it. And very similar to, if you happen to look at all of the windows, um, right outside of here and, and the library above, um, that similar concept could be carried around the building further. I think really making a, a more appealing, um, building as you approach it, hopefully exciting and engaging for your students. All right, starting to move inside the building. Um, in your entrance vestibule, one, uh, security, uh, safety and security upgrade that, um, we recommend, uh, is, right now you have sliding windows, um, that your receptionist is on the other side of. Um, we feel like that it, it may be worth sort of further hardening that, um, that area by, um, going to a fixed window. Um, and then you'd have sort of a, a little slot in the counter so you can, you can pass some stuff through. And also, if you look at the photo on the right, this is a different school where we did a similar layout. And we can include sort of that, that, um, stainless steel looking box with the handle on it. That's really, that's a parcel pass-through. So you're able to open that if you needed, if, if someone forgot a backpack or whatever might need to be passed through. That's, that's how, um, you would, you would, uh, pass things back and forth through. So it's a little more secure. If you think about, um, the weakness at the curtain vestibule is just the ability, if someone could, um, reach into that window or climb into that window, um, and then they would have access to the building easily, since at that point they could access the buzzer to release doors. So, um, as it makes sense, every district, um, I would, I would say this caveat, every district, um, has to find that balance between security and user-friendly entrances. And so, um, as you feel comfortable with this, this is, this would be the one recommendation that you could do for a security upgrade. Continuing with sort of the safety and security upgrades throughout the building, not just the vestibule, but more at a larger systems, um, view. Uh, we're recommending a, um, a blue light system, uh, public address, and sort of an emergency notification system. So what this really means, and you may have seen it in, in other buildings or districts, um, it's an ability for, um, the main office and others to, um, be able to give an immediate alert across the building. Um, we have, uh, both within classrooms, you can sort of see the speaker with the message board underneath it. Um, so it's systems like that where you can get messages out, you can communicate building-wide. Um, it's all, some of it is automated, 'cause some of that just sounds like a P A system. That's what public address does. Uh, but this just takes it a step further. Um, there's some automated systems where, uh, similar to your fire alarm, all the, um, cross-quarter doors would release. Uh, again, the blue light system that I mentioned is a visual, uh, notification that something is occurring in the building that, um, both can be, uh, uh, for people inside the building, but also outside the building. And so that's really helpful, uh, as you're approaching the building to, to have some indication that the building is in lockdown or some type of emergency is occurring within the building. So again, a lot with building access and, and, um, lockdown and, and controlling, segmenting, segmenting the building, um, from within if there ever were an intruder who was able to, to get into the various, um, portions of the building. Um, and then again, uh, just everyday, uh, use of the building, the, the fire, uh, fire alarm system is something that we've started to replace in the last project, and we would continue to do that along the way, and bringing that up to, um, current code, uh, where no longer is it just that blaring noise, but it's, um, it is some voice alarm, and that there's, there's a fire or smoke or whatever it is. It can give you better directions on what to do, where to go. Um, it's also, uh, for the hearing impaired, and then there's, there's again, visual, um, readouts for folks. Another area that was, uh, that, that came up was the auditorium. Outside of the seats, which were replaced, I think in about two thousand eight or so, um, all the auditorium systems are very outdated and, and problematic. Um, some items such as the raking, um, are starting to pose, um, some safety issues. And so we're looking at a full renovation of the auditorium, and really an opportunity to, um, refresh the space, update all systems, and really make it state-of-the-art for your students, uh, and to give a, give a fresh look to the space and, and to, uh, really a space that's used every day by the school and is, um, in a lot of ways, the public face of the school to the community. And so, uh, a, a great area to, to, uh, really invest some money. Uh, adding air conditioning is the other, the other key piece here. And so, again, just making it more user-friendly. Uh, on those hot days, it's an area maybe students can retreat to. And certainly during, uh, plays or musicals or anything else, just making it more comfortable for all occupants. Some other key, um, details within the, the, the building. The gym, again, still has sort of this nineteen fifties or sixties glass block wall system, which is, um, really time to be, uh, replaced. And the wood floor, it's time to re-sand and refinish the floor. Um, so that would really take care of the gym at the moment. Moving into the elementary gym, couple of key areas, the, the bleachers, the scoreboard, the basketball hoops, all really time to replace those. They're all original from the late nineties when that gym was built. Um, and also an opportunity to add a retractable batting cage, um, to, to help with, uh, those sports, um, when there's still snow on the ground and baseball's trying to start, softball's trying to start. All right, so moving to the cafeteria, again, we're, you'll, you'll notice that they're really focusing on those areas that every student uses and, um, and what needs to be done. These, the cafeteria, um, the, the greenhouse structure, um, has served its, its time. We've already once, two thousand eight, replaced all the glass because, um, it was just making the cafeteria so hot and unbearable to be in. So that's why we went to that really dark tinted green glass, trying to help with the, with, uh, the, the solar issues, um, from that facade. But, um, at this point, we, um, it's premature for us to design what would go there. It's more, we're pointing out that it's probably time to replace it. So we're, we're not saying it's gonna be the same thing that goes back in there. There are opportunities, opportunities to do something slightly different. Um, we wouldn't, um, necessarily change the floor plan, but we could certainly rethink the walls where that sort of greenhouse structure is. While we're there, already disturbing things, it's a great, um, opportunity to just update the cafeteria, uh, make sure that the finishes are durable, holding up well. Think about acoustics in this space, which is always a, a real challenge, um, when you put a lot of students together in a space that needs to be durable and easy to clean, which means, uh, very hard surfaces and a, and a lot of, um, reflective surfaces. So it's, it's a great chance to, um, also try to make the cafeteria, um, a, a, a space that's not too loud. Right next to that, the kitchen is, uh, definitely a dated space. Um, and so, uh, New York State allows kitchen equipment to be an amiable expense if we renovate the entire room. So it's strategic to, um, renovate the room, and I don't think anyone's gonna challenge that. The green tile has, has, uh, has seen better days and it's time to go. So, um, kitchen and all equipment would, would be, uh, a full replacement. Moving into the primary wing, uh, you see these, these nine-inch wide lockers, which nobody can really put boots into. You know, you end up stacking your boots one on top of the other, or more likely what happens is they're just all over the hallway, um, boots and jackets and everything else. And so, uh, replacing the lockers with something wider that's more useful for students. Um, when you go to the classrooms in the other photo, you can see, um, some of the cabinets or casework, as we call it. Um, it's still original nineteen fifties-era, um, casework, uh, definitely time to go. A lot of things are warped and, uh, have seen much better days. And then the other thing within those, um, primary classrooms, there's four, um, individual use toilet rooms within, um, four of those rooms. And, uh, again, those rooms are an enormous headache, uh, for the maintenance department, uh, because of just corroding piping and fixtures, and, uh, they're in very bad shape. And so, uh, there is, there's, uh, continual, uh, issues with leaks and, and just dealing with, with those spaces. Uh, so we would want to upgrade those rooms as well. It's an interesting challenge because when you, uh, when you go to upgrade a toilet room, um, State Education Department, uh, would want you to make it larger, uh, to meet ADA accessibility. Um, we've, we've been pretty successful in, in, um, doing projects. The, the issue, when we take one step, the issue with that is obviously we're taking away from teaching space. And so there has to be a, a balance in there. So we'll work with the district on, uh, how that makes the most sense for you. We have had success, um, where, since you do have, um, ADA accessible, um, facilities just down the hall, um, we can make the case that, that those, um, those work for all students and that those classrooms within, or those toilet rooms within each room could just stay the size they are. And we would just update finishes, fixtures, and fix some of the piping issues that you're having there. So a lot more conversation to have around that, but it's certainly, um, an area that needs some attention. I mentioned the HVAC already, so this is, um, some views of the third through fifth grade, um, classrooms. We'd also replace the, uh, mechanical unit in the weight room, which is, um, past, uh, you know, this, this equipment, you know, after about twenty years or so, um, you're not getting much out of it. And if you remember, um, in other parts of the building, particularly in some middle school classrooms and into the high school, we've been replacing, uh, these univentilators with, um, a, a vertical univentilator system. So if you go into some newer rooms, you'll notice a large, um, vertical univentilator, obviously in the name, that sits in the corner. What that does is we can then, um, dump the air into the ceiling, and we're just distributing, um, fresh air around the room in, in a much better way, instead of trying to blow it from the window all the way across, which, these units are very loud, um, and they're, uh, they're very distracting, and they don't do a very good job. They make for very drafty rooms, so.
They drag gloves though.
Say that again?
They drag gloves.
They do, yes, and all the gloves are on there, right? Exactly. We'll find another new accomplishment. Uh, in the X suite, um, the, the welding stations in particular, both, um, in their, their layout, they're, they're, they're pretty old and the ventilation system is inadequate. So again, an opportunity to, to update that area, keep the, keep students safe, keep the building safe, um, but still allow, uh, that great program to, to continue. Um, right next door to that is the greenhouse, just a, a minor upgrade to the current greenhouse, given its own independent space heater, so they can truly have control of what temperature needs to be there. They're not reliant at all on the boilers, um, and, and so it's, it's just, uh, it's better control for them. Uh, your elevator in the building, the, the, it's, it's time for the cab and the machinery to be rebuilt. I think it dates back into the eighties. All right, so that's, um, then I could speed talking. Um, all right, so that was Proposition One, that we're really focused on this bit. Switching gears now, um, and this says bus garage, but it's so much more than this. So I think we're all really excited. Uh, I think you've heard me talk about the problems that the bus garage creates, both in where it's situated on the site. Um, I think you're at least, um, if not, if not five, ten years into that building being noted as sort of, uh, beyond its useful life as an entire facility, uh, through the building condition survey process. And so, um, you can go back and look at the building condition survey, um, from, from the last one we did a couple of years ago. And you'll see a fairly significant amount of money that it would take to bring that building back up to, um, sort of a, a useful condition. The roof is, um, the roof is in really bad shape. The boilers, I don't, have you, you didn't even turn them on, right?
I restarted one.
Yeah, the boilers are in really bad shape. Um, pretty soon it's become, it's going to become cold storage building, and, and the, the, the transportation directors are gonna have to come inside and, um, rethink all that. So the bus garage itself is in rough shape. I'm gonna go through a whole series of things, and then at the end, I'm gonna show you some larger site plans and sort of put it all together. So I sort of, I sort of struck. So I sort of, I sort of struggled with whether to show you the site plan first or the photos first. So I, this is, this is where we're going. So here's the bus garage, just some quick images inside now. Obviously, again, very old. Part of this, you'll see that, that second sentence, part of this would be to build a new building for the bus garage. And it would be working with the district about, in a future facility, what, what do you actually need? And, and so that, that's to be determined. But included with that could be a new toilet and concessions spaces or facilities specifically for the public to use and located adjacent to the stadium. Since right now, I think you're using the, the small bathrooms that are in the bus garage. We did look at, to ask people to walk all the way back to this building to, to use the facilities was, was extreme. It does not mean code, so, so we're, we're trying to fit through all these moving parts. Again, the parking is in horrible shape, right? There's giant potholes particularly behind the building. And so it's, it's time to repave on all sides of where the bus garage currently sits and to pave where the bus garage, that footprint as well. So again, a large, clean, open parking lot, which would allow for the district to really rethink. Parking and particularly during pickup and drop off, sort of how cars circulate through the entire property. And hopefully it helps alleviate some of the congestion on Kendrick Street. Storage, you've got these very old storage barns. And so again, we're proposing to remove these old barns, do a replacement facility. And also next to this, we're proposing a canopy, an open canopy where buses could park. Right now, your buses are parking in your bus garage. That is not an aidable thing. And so you've taken great advantage of it for as long as you can, but again, this building is, it's, it's, it's become an issue. And so you're going to have to start thinking about parking your buses outside. We're talking about doing at least a covered canopy to help keep some of the snow off of them and make it easier for buses to, to clean off and go. It's something every school district is wrestling with and, you know, so it's, nobody has indoor storage anymore because the state will not need it. And so it's, it would be a huge expense just to park inside. Again, here's your, your bus fuel station. As we look at the overall site, we'll be looking to, to make sure that it fits in with everything else we're proposing in the area. It is reaching the end of its life and it may be an opportune time to rethink where the bus fueling station is. At the same time, with the removal of the bus garage, that's the last item that uses heating oil on the site. So we can finally get the heating oil tank, which sort of sits right by where the generator is, right over here next to this building. It's finally time to get that out of the ground before you have any issues with leaking or anything like that. So originally, before the last project, when we replaced boilers and, and moved to natural gas, both buildings worked off of heating oil. So this is really a long-term transition in, in, away from heating oil towards natural gas and also electric where it makes sense and, and renewable sources. So that's the fuel tank aspect of this. So there's two underground tanks, again, diesel is the, for the buses and heating oil is for the, the bus garage. If you notice, the generator is in a pretty awkward spot on the corner of the building, right by the parking lot. It's, as you notice, some of the things we're talking about doing here, including the dumpsters, is really about cleaning up around the perimeter of the building and just, just getting things in, in better locations visually. So again, the, the generator has been on the potential work list for a few rounds now. It's a great opportunity to replace it as it is reaching the end of its life. Now that natural gas is an option, it makes a lot of sense to move to that instead of diesel, which is what it is now. And also at that same time, let's move it away from the building a little bit so that it's not like one of the first things you see as you're walking up to the, to the building from that side of the parking lot. Alright, this shows up funny here. I'm gonna move already to, yeah, I apologize. I'm gonna come down here and just point at things. This was a colored diagram. We'll give you the colored diagram so that you can look at it after this meeting. But let me orient you what's going on here. So Kendrick Street is right there. This is the outline of the building. So again, I just talked about the generator, here's the main entrance, bus loop, and then sort of the main drive-in. What you can see here is a parking lot without a bus garage. So we're talking about the new bus garage, the concessions and toilet facility on the back of the site now. Really opening up a lot of paving and increasing your total site part by nearly fifty spaces. So a great opportunity to even potentially rethink. You ended up with a lot of cars scattered about the site. This may really help bring them back into one central location. Maybe reduce the amount of cars that are driving around the site as students are trying to walk into the building. And so there's a lot of opportunities here from a parking standpoint. Again, so there's a, a potential spot for the bus garage concessions. Again, a nice plaza entry into the stadium, something a little more obvious and inviting as people come here. We can rethink and lay out the access and accessibility, access to the softball field at the same time. Over here would be that cold storage building. That cold storage building that I mentioned. Oop, Chris, I'm really messy up here.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, you can go forward by touching it, it's okay. Then just flip slideshow at the time. Upper right, white button? Slide chapter?
Oh, it was too big. Okay, so again, a, a cold storage building, there's, the goal, the goal of that is to really, that there's, again, there's, there's weird little shadow over the property, right? So it's a great opportunity to maybe get rid of some of those, consolidate things and have it in one clean spot. Next to that, all the buses would park right along the edge here. Again, that could be a covered zone. We're also thinking about, so there's this idea of electric buses. And we're, we're all sort of holding our breath to see where that goes long-term. But we know that there'll be chargers that are required for those. And we're just thinking about, there's a nice slot of gla- of grass, so we would not be disturbing the parking lot. That would be an easy way to put in the infrastructure when the time is appropriate for electric buses. We're also talking about the generator could sit right over here as well. So, sorry, we had a really nice colored diagram here. I know it's a lot harder to read, but I think I've hit all sort of the, the important pieces there. So let's jump right into the budget. So Proposition One, the total cost would be, I'm just gonna talk around numbers, twenty-four million. Again, that, that aligns perfectly with your maximum cost allowance. We're strategically, timing-wise, we're, we're proposing a vote in December, which again aligns with when your maximum cost allowance resets. So that you keep doing projects in about a five-year cycle. And so that's, with, with, with the maximum cost allowance, which the state started to enforce much stronger within the last ten years or so. It's really forced districts to, to make sure they're maximizing and working within the maximum cost allowance. Otherwise, it's very difficult to do all the work that you need to do in the building and keep it all aidable. Alright, so again, as I mentioned there, it's one hundred percent aidable. All the work that we've talked about is all aidable work. It's mainly infrastructure and renovation work. Proposition Two is in the fifteen million dollar range. And we say ninety-five percent aidable and again, it's, it's early on and we'll continue to work on refining that. It really comes down to what exactly goes into that ultimate bus garage. What is it, what is it? Housing. And then items like the, the toilet facilities and the concessions are just not aidable items. That's okay. I mean, not every project can be one hundred percent aidable. So that's, that's fairly normal. Ninety-five percent is still a, a good number. So we're talking a combined cost of around thirty-nine million. Again, similar to what the Bozies two per ten was speaking of, so obviously you get building aid here. And so New York State would cover roughly ten, twenty-nine million of that, leaving Hamilton, the, the local share at just under ten million. This is a block rush right now. And you'll see in the next slide when we talk about next steps. One of the big next steps is for us to continue to work with the district administration to refine what would be in the bus garage, to work with fiscal advisors and to continue to, to sharpen our pencil when it comes to all of these numbers. So talking about a timeline, a really important piece of all of this is if you're interested, if, if doing this bus garage proposition is, is something you're interested in, we, we very strongly recommend that we get moving on what's called the preliminary submittal. So we would want to submit a, a conceptual design bus garage to the State Education Department within the next two months, so that they have time to confirm that they agree with the project and that we can get it in writing from them, that, that they're going to provide building aid for it. We would never want you to go into a vote without that, without those answers secured. And so we know the State, State Education Department, there's a fairly lengthy backlog, easily four or five months. And so that's why we're sort of saying this needs to happen fairly soon if the bus garage is something that you want to entertain. It doesn't mean you're locked into it. We can do a preliminary submittal. And then if, if you choose, you know, when we get to late summer, fall, it's just not making sense. Fiscally, financially, it's just not working. There, there's, there's nothing wrong with just not including it in the final referendum. So again, spin bus garage, secret process, and again, the, the quality, Environmental Quality and Review Act. There's, because we're taking down a building, we're doing a lot of site work, it could be a fairly lengthy process as well. And so we recommend that that would start in the next month or so as well. And, and again, through that whole process, on your behalf, we contact all agencies, everything from Chipo onward and let them know about the project. Give them an opportunity to comment or ask for additional studies. It would be the first time we've been asked to do an archaeological dig or other things like that, depending on what they know about the site or what concerns they may have. So again, we build in a lot of extra time to make sure that that process can fully go through the full mount. And then you're able to take those findings, work with your attorney and do final secret resolutions, which is something you would do in October. So again, we would take all of this, come back to you in late summer, start of the school year, give you an update, make sure that everyone is comfortable with the project and all of our findings. At that point, you sort of take a couple of the formal steps that are required to legally allow you and align you to do a public referendum. So there's those resolutions that you have to pass and then those are strategically set so that you have the proper waiting time to allow in December, an early December referendum. So we sort of take this and work it backwards. So that's, that's the big picture timeline. And I know we've been talking timelines with you for two years now, so I think that's been pretty consistent. Alright, so again, next steps. Again, like, you know, we've, we've talked about the bus garage. I think I've done two presentations, Chad did a presentation a few months ago. So we've, we've been hitting and hinting around this bus garage and this other one for quite some time. So just continue to consider what makes sense for the community from your viewpoint. In the meantime, we would recommend that our office and the district administration continue to vet a preliminary bus garage design and get that submitted to SED. It says January in there because we're, I was supposed to present this in January. I'm just realizing I missed that when I updated it. And then finally, that same group would, as I've already mentioned, continue to refine what actually goes in the bus garage. Work with your financial consultants and continue to really dissect that local calling and what that would mean to voters. Alright.
Good job.
It's like drilling from a fire hose, right? There's a lot there. And so the, the district has the presentation and can share that with you if you need to just sort of go back through it and digest further. But certainly Chad and I are here if you have questions.
Just to go back, this may be more for Bill, but going back to the building renovations and some of the security updates, especially the front entrance. Have you maybe toured and seen how those are set at other schools?
We have. I have in the other districts. It's kind of the trend, it is going back to this security area where you have double entrances. So you have doors locked, they enter into this secure vestibule and then there's another layer of doors before you enter. And then there's the security area that you have an attendance aid. Sometimes in some districts, that window goes right into an office. And it kind of doubles as your attendance or receptionist and the office. So it's kind of the trend to move back to that.
Yeah, it's, it's considered best, best practice now. And again, that's, at least on the security front, that's always a sort of an evolving thing, but that, that is definitely. You want to, whoever's, whoever is, is operating and overseeing that entrance, you want them to be able to see as people approach the building, assess, is this, you know, if you see anything strange. Again, it's, it's how many times can you stop them and sort of observe them? So exactly what Bill said. And, and what you, what you currently have. So you're being bused into that vestibule, you're held there. And then most times, that, that's as far as you go if you're handing something in, if you're dropping something off. Or you're at least being held there until a certain, whatever staff member you're there because it comes to catch you and then take you to wherever. And so that is from the architectural side though, from, from natural construction, that is what we're, we're seeing not only across the state, but, but even at national level. Those are some best practices.
It's like the idea of you as experienced with our school, seeing how it works in other schools, make sure.
Yeah.
It's, uh, similarly thinking about that area that, as you said, that you wanna see people approaching, but right now they can also, it's easy to see in as well. Is that standard to do something where it gets, something you can see out, but it's harder to see in?
So it, it's a, it's a good point and what we're doing to mitigate that. So because there's, there's, sometimes we get so focused on, on active shooter scenarios that we, that we don't think about all the other
Right.
issues and hazards that students deal with every day. And so in the end, most of the time, high visibility and transparency is a positive thing. And so we recognize that, that does mean that somebody could stand outside those doors and if they had a weapon, that they could see people through the glass.
Well, I'm thinking about specifically in the, where the attendance officer sits.
Yeah, yeah.
Just that section.
Yeah, so at most, some districts, and again, this is definitely, this is all over the map on, on who's comfortable with what. We see that as extreme, it's always glass because that person really needs that visibility. The best visibility in the vestibule and as much of the site and the parking lot as they can see from their spot. And so the more glass, the better is, is the rule from their vantage point.
Right.
We have, we recognize that that person is sort of on the frontline if there, if there is a hazard. And so some districts have gone to various levels of bullet resistant glass, while others just attempt to have a way for them to sort of duck and dodge and, and, and exit that space if necessary. So it's a difficult, it's a difficult conversation and.
I know there's no one answer, but just interested to hear.
Yeah, yeah, so we definitely, the, the, there's, we have one district in particular that to just help sort of ease the concerns, particularly of that person who has to sit at that NASCAR. That, that district has gone to bullet resisting glass, because there's no such thing as bulletproof glass. And there's all these levels and so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's far more complicated than just, oh. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's far more complicated than just, oh, we'll just put the bulletproof glass in. Because then it comes down to what, what types of guns and what it can't stop.
Right, right, right. Thanks.
I also have a question. First of all, thank, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciated it. You touched on making space for EV chargers potentially. And Matt, I think you might, you might have mentioned this to me already, so forgive me if I'm, if I'm not remembering. Uh, but if, should we need like a new transformer? Would that be part of this survey as well? Uh, would, would that, would a transformer be equitable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, was that considered?
That is absolutely. And so a, a, one of the, one of the big things that we keep an eye on with any district, because there's some really hot topics right now, right? There's air conditioning, and there's electric buses. Both have huge energy, energy demands for the building. And so, but specific to Hamilton, it actually has been on sort of the radar on the BCS for the last two rounds of it to do an electrical service upgrade. And so I, I think it, it is an item that we will again look at how much demand the building has and, and can the site, can the, the switchgear and center transformers kind of, kind of supply what you need? And if not, it's time to upgrade it. And so it's a good item to, for as long as you can, sort of drag your feet to make sure that you fully understand, like, we, we'd love to better understand the whole electric bus movement and what that will ultimately mean and what that demand will be. At the same time, continuing to understand where New York State is sort of moving school districts when it comes to air conditioning as well, to, to truly understand how much demand will, will there be, and then to truly size the switchgear properly so that it carries you for another forty, fifty years before you need to deal with it again.
So we would, we would monitor very closely other funding opportunities throughout the whole electric process. So if there's funding opportunities through other entities like NYSC or other state or federal funding sources, is to not have to use capital project dollars to do that. Remember to do that, then that frees up more of this money for our process to do other things. I think it would be kind of a fluid situation that we would monitor through all the processes.
Absolutely. And even thinking about, through the various funding avenues that the state has, whether it's transportation aid or building aid, just thinking about, because they're all, every, every district, at least every district I'm familiar with has different levels. Often your transportation aid is lower than the building aid. And so it's just thinking about where do we plug it in and what is financially best at that moment. So, but ab- absolutely, we, it's something we need to keep an eye on, and it would be, it's traditionally, it's part of a, a capital project to, to upgrade your, your electrical service. But again, I think with the electric bus conversation in particular, it's, it's opened the door to allow that to possibly be done as a, as a separate funding source.
Yeah.
Then tied to when you end up putting in the, the chargers and all.
Yeah, I appreciate that answer. Thanks. And I understand this is a prioritization exercise, so I just wanted to kind of understand where that fit into the whole picture.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, I have a separate pro, uh, question. In the site plan that you showed us, going to the new bus garage location, did I see, I wasn't sure if I saw a walkway that, like, would that, I think the, is it existing walkway? Would that be extended all the way to?
Yes, would absolutely, and I, and again, I apologize if that, I was so excited to show you that graphic. Bill and Matt, like, they were so excited when they saw that. It was such a, I'm a bit disappointed. Absolutely. So, so we're, we're very, very aware of both car traffic flow and orderly flow of cars and parking as well as pedestrians on site. And so there absolutely would be sidewalks connecting the fields back to the building in, in a, you know, safest possible. I mean, right now, if, right now you have a nice sidewalk, we would extend it all the way to field and anywhere else. We'd, we would be very aware of where else would students naturally be walking and making sure that we're giving them a path where they're not necessarily having to, or, or not naturally trying to cut across parking lots or something. We're definitely very aware of the, the car pedestrian issues with, with drop off. And it's, it's a common, it is literally a topic in every school district because we're just, we're at a point where so many people are dropping their students off that it's, it's like, outside of every school district across upstate New York, there's a traffic jam every morning and every afternoon.
I just have one quick thing. Um, we're talking about a lot of potential paving that's happening. And I don't know if it was Chad or Matt, somebody was talking before about making sure that the, anything else that goes underground is done before then. So is that part of the building condition survey? Making sure that like the water lines that run to the street are updated and we're gonna have to dig that up?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great point, and it's why, again, when you, when you look at the slideshow, when you see the first site plan, it's basically all the constraints, and that's where we were juggling. Like, we have these underground tanks, and we have like an underground pipeline that goes from the, the number, the, the heating oil out to the bus garage. So yeah, we're trying to be very aware of everything that's underground. And to, to do all of that before we pave and to make sure that we're not then coming back. It would be a real failure if somebody had to come back a year or two or five years later and cut a trench through the pavement. That would be a real travesty. So we do spend a lot of time thinking through that and making sure that we're, we're trying to do things in the right order.
Okay.
So we try, I mean, if that happens, I apologize, I'll pitch. We do everything we can to try to think through all eventualities.
So back to buses, while we still have diesel vehicles, if we're moving the parking to that north side right against residential properties, is there any concern about noise issue there? Or change, do we have to do any change in the barrier, the fences there?
I don't think so. Um, but again, I don't know how long your buses sit and idle. I know we would install for the interim now because they are diesel. We would, again, put like block heaters so you can plug the buses in. So then, um, then I'm not sure how long your buses sit and idle before, or they start up and leave fairly quickly. So I, I don't know, Bill, if you have.
We'd have to work with Lorna on that.
Yeah.
Because they wouldn't have to idle there, certainly, they're part of it.
Yeah, so maybe the, maybe that's more of a policy thing, like start up and move wherever. Because I'm not, I, I don't have a good handle on what they do now. Do they start up and just sit in the bus garage and idle? Or they have to, like, I don't know what they do, so. But I feel like it's something that may be less through architecture and more through policy that would be addressed.
Yeah. Thanks.
Um, this, this is a question for you. Um, so in terms of communicating some of this information to the community, um, I think, we, we had talked about maybe doing something, right? Um, I was just, I might have missed it in the timeline, but where does that sit and fit into the timeline?
So once we have a decision from your team, whether to include the bus garage or not, um, we would start public forums and sharing this information with the public to get some feedback.
I, I think the, the real full court of press would start probably before the advance of the decision. So really, it would be in anticipation of a moment's under, if there's more design, um, to get a better sense of what the fiscal impact would be. That's what, that's what we would really have to sell the project, it would be, we'd have to.
We're going to submit something for approval in March. How definitive is that, is that plan? Is that?
Sorry, I can't, I.
How do, we, we'll really submit in March for approval from the SED. Is that a very definitive plan? Like, this is exactly what we're gonna do, or is it more on strokes?
No, it's, um, it's our, it's our, it's our best guess, and they're usually fairly close to the final design, but you're not held to that. You're, you're held probably more to the spaces. So if we submit something and show two mechanic bays, and then we turn around and submit something that shows twelve, we're gonna have a problem, obviously. So, um, so we, we normally, what you submit, everyone understands it's not gonna be identical in the final design. But it's really just the overall concept, the number of spaces, the general size of the building. And, and as long as you stay fairly close to that, there's, there should be no issues. But really it's key to get the state education to approve the concept before going too far ahead. If there's something I overrepeat, it's gonna be that today. Chad and I talked about it a half time. We got, we're probably set up in this far. If you want a bus garage, we've got to submit something to the state as soon as possible, so.
Any other questions for Paul? So I, what's the process for us to decide that? Is that something we should do tonight then, or?
If you're ready to, if you want to wait for Michelle to be here, and then we can have a complete discussion, or if you're comfortable, ready to move forward, that would be my recommendation. I would recommend we move forward with it.
And moving forward, like you said, doesn't hold, bind us to anything at this point?
It's not binding, you know?
But the next step is.
It's really an exploratory step to, to verify that you're gonna get building aid.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that Michelle would have any objections there, but is this something we need to go, or to?
We have to vote on this? I don't think so. I think we just.
No.
Decide.
Approval to move ahead.
No, it's just a, we just don't wanna overstep our bounds. And we certainly don't want to incur costs for you that, for, for items that you didn't intend, so. But really just, you know, if, if Bill and Matt tell us to move forward, we'll move forward, so. We just wanna do it in unity, yeah.
Thanks.
Um, would you mind checking with Michelle and just making sure she's okay with it? And then if we need to sort of discuss if there are any issues that come up. Uh, you think we'd, we set up another sort of meeting before the next, before meeting?
I think if you want to move forward.
I think we have to establish.
Before, before the next month. So let me talk to Michelle, get her feelings, I'll report back to you. And then if we need to reconvene, we can set a special meeting in the next week.
Sounds good.
But I don't, personally, I don't see any reason that we would, when they start exploring, I don't think they would.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of.
So.
It's good to me. Okay. I'll be in touch soon.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We're excited to be part of it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to another district presentation, our HCS Essa data from Chris Rogers.
Save her back, Paul.
Thanks.
Bill, you said you'd have that presentation that you can share with us?
I do, yeah.
Is it pretty good colored?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
That would be helpful. Where's the tech, please, there's one tech guy.
Yeah, I don't know. Get the tech guy here. Who's our IT guy?
So Bill, I figured out the two things that I'm blocked because I'm on this course, but I can't actually listen to you.
Okay.
So I'll have to, I'll have Chris figure that out.
Good evening, everyone. Um, today I'm wearing my data accountability hat. My slide presentation will be pretty short because in terms of our Essa accountability performance, we're doing great, excellent. In every metric that is measured under Essa, we are at the top level, which is the, I forget what the acronym is. I'll, I won't go through this. You guys probably are very familiar with Essa at this point. It's the federal act that ensures accountability from schools. It measures a bunch of different metrics. For us, it's efficiency, growth, graduation rates, also attendance. And it measures overall performance and also subgroup performance. So these are the performance indicators, and I'll share this with you guys later. But student achievement, proficiency in ELA and math, this is both in three through eight and also on Regis exams. You'll see that they break us out into two different groups, elementary and middle, and then high school. Elementary and middle goes all the way through eighth grade. So it's strange because we have some eighth graders who, who take Regis exams. Those get actually counted in the three through eight data, not the high school data. But either way, it's, it's still very good. Our year of year growth, graduation rate, which for us is always good. Subperformance, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit. Because even though we are rated at the highest levels overall, there is a little bit of room for growth for us when it comes to some of our, the performance of some of our subgroups, which I'll show you on a chart in a moment. Chronic absenteeism, we just learned that the state is going to change the way that it measures chronic absenteeism. For this report, it was the number of students who missed ten percent or more of the school year. Heather was at the presentation with me. I, I would be, I would be a little bit out of my depth if I tried to explain the new way they're gonna measure attendance data. It's got to do with, do you understand it? Okay, perfect.
Um, so instead of ten percent or more, they're going to take every single student and put them on a four-point scale. And then it, the students will be looked at individually. So they'll be rated like a level one, a level two, a level three, a level four. So ultimately, that will, I think, help our absenteeism rates.
They'll be very similar to the state assessment score, one, two, three, four. That's how they're gonna re, um, record chronic absenteeism on that one through four scale, individually.
Again, our absenteeism rates are very good. According to the Essa measurements, we rate a four. But I, again, there's always room for improvement. Um, so here is just a quick snapshot. This is again, this is a thousand mile view. This data is publicly available. It was embargoed, although it's not yet on our state report card. The newer report card hasn't come out yet. All of this data, including all the subgroup breakdowns, will be available on our state report card when it's released. We expect that in the next few weeks. But you can see that we received a four. That's our, our raw score there in elementary. That's a combined score for ELA and math. And then in the middle school and high school, we received a three. But that score right there, that thirty-nine point eight, we're within five percent of a level four. We're this close to being a level four there. So again, that's a very good score. And then the district overall received a four for the three through eight ELA and math scores. This is our, this is the Regis exams, basically, ELA and math. Again, for the high schools, seventy-eight eight, that's a four. That's combined ELA and math weighted index. The district received a four. This is what I was talking to you before about some areas that we could improve. So the Essa data is broken into some subgroups. And they include economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. You can see that we received lower scores in some of these areas. Again, these ones that I've highlighted with the arrows, we're this close to having those scores be a three. But again, those are areas that we can target. Grades six through eight, in particular, we've got a little bit of work to do there. But when these subgroups are factored into the whole, again, we are in good standing. Questions so far? Chronic absenteeism, these are our rates. And according to the metrics from the state, we are in good standing. We're in the top level. That means that we are in the top seventy-five or above percentile of all the school districts in the state comparing us. So you can see we had twelve point five percent absenteeism in grades three through five, thirteen point seven, six through eight, and thirteen point six in the high school. Those are the percentage of students that missed ten percent or more of the class. I think all of us would love to see that below ten.
What's, what's that? We're gonna have the numbers. I don't know about the breakdown.
I could get you those, those numbers. Again, we're small enough that small numbers move the needle.
Yeah.
So I could get you those numbers, about how many kids those are.
Do you know, do you know the breakdown, just of the grades three through five, six through eight, nine through twelve, I don't know what they?
I can get that for you easily.
Yeah, okay.
Again, I just did like ten thousand miles to go out, but um the data I have breaks us down grade by grade.
Yeah.
So, um, it gets, I could let you know that data easily.
I guess I'm just saying, I don't, I know how many kids are in the school, I don't know how many kids are in three through five.
Oh, how many students are in there?
Oh, let's see.
Yeah.
Just a brick math.
Hundred twenty-ish.
Maybe roughly, hundred twenty.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good ballpark, yeah.
Hundred twenty.
So that's like twelve percent is two kids.
Yeah.
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 Yep. There's our graduation rate. Um, this, so this is the average of four, five, and six-year cohorts. So, um, you guys, uh, know that some, the cohorts are divided into those that take four years, five years, or six years to um graduate, and that's the average of the, of the three, and that gives us a level three. Again, being as small as we are, if one of our students in a cohort doesn't graduate on time, that could be fatal to us. Even given that, we're still in good standing. All measures in subgroups, LSI, which is an acronym that says Level Subordinate Improvement, that's the highest level you can be at. It means that we are in control of ourselves, we can assess our own data and decide what needs to be fixed, and have worked on it ourselves. If your data gets poorer, um, the state steps in and assigns you plans and tells you what you're going to fix. But that's where we are, we're in good standing for every metric. Questions? That was the whole thing.
Just any initial ideas on, on how to help those subgroups?
We are having discussions about that in, in admin team, um, we've got a number of, of good ideas, um. I will say that um these, these subgroups, it's not just us. Um, sometimes it's tough to target these subgroups, but we do have a bunch of really good ideas. We'd be happy to present them to you in a, in a different time.
Yeah, I wonder if the inclusivity committee might have some more.
And what's the left?
The inclusivity committee might have some, some good thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we would need to, just in my opinion, get to the root of
Yeah.
what the trouble is, right? What are the barriers that are preventing those subgroups from being su- as successful as their peers?
Yeah.
Once we discover what those barriers really are, I think that we can tackle it.
Regarding the absenteeism, how is that information um given to parents? Is that like an individual thing as it occurs? I know like if they go to the school report card for like ELA exams, is it gonna be something that's mailed to the student, or to the parents to say like, hey, your child got a two and?
Yeah, I don't know how the state's gonna aggregate them and put them on the, your individual, you know, you get
I'm curious.
you get your individual profile, and if the absenteeism rate will be on there moving forward, I'm not sure if they're gonna include it there. I really don't know.
For us, ultimately, I know that, um, so right now, we um we contact the parents if, if it's a chronic problem, but we also, not to speak out of turn, but we've just been working on those reports with the graphs about absenteeism that we will be sending to everyone.
Oh, we, we do, yeah.
You are, and you have more to discuss with me.
Yes, we have a second year. Um, so it's kind of a, a graph that shows um their students' um absenteeism rate in comparison to others in their grade level. And so this is our second year of doing it, and it's always been really helpful in like having those conversations with families. So that's in addition to, obviously, it's reported on the, um, report card too, but this graph system has been really helpful. And then honestly, um, we need after like quarterly and then right at the five-week mark too, to review all of the data, and so that's So internally, like there have been some pieces that we will just continue to do. Um, so I don't think that, I don't know how the state reporting will impact us, I think it's gonna impact us in a more positive way, but we'll still continue those
Yeah.
Yeah.
practices, so that's, I think. Um, and then just to add on to your other question about some changes, um, this year they have some curriculum changes to some of those subgroups, um, there's some special education changes. So that was in direct, uh, you know, noticing that, noticing that data, and then variable to make some changes, so. And that's just gonna be ongoing, um, and some of it is easy to identify based on data where you need to make the changes, and other is not so easy, so um, it's kind of an ongoing conversation, but so work is up to us.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Moving on to s- uh, six point one, this is our first opportunity for public comments. Um, I would like to state the Board of Education kindly asked that all community participation be limited to agenda items. Uh, as this helps focus board discussions for the remainder of the meeting. Also, please remember that the board is not permitted to respond directly to comments made during the meeting. I don't know if we have any comments online, cause I can't get on YouTube, I'm blocked.
We had one from a break, and it says, let's go, my school.
Awesome, thanks, David. Okay, so now ready, we're gonna move on to seven point one, personnel. Uh, I need a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Robert Schubert, teacher assistant, effective January, sorry, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is recommended by the superintendent with sincere appreciation for her services rendered to the district.
I'll move second.
Uh-huh, our discussion would be an executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Michael Holdrum, music teacher, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is recommended by the superintendent with sincere appreciation for his services rendered to the district.
I'll move second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Susan Lehman, math teacher, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is recommended by the superintendent with sincere appreciation for her services rendered to the district.
I'll move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hmm. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Emily Freeth, varsity track and field coach, effective January eighth, twenty twenty-five, is recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve a childbearing leave of absence for Jordan Mercer-Smith with tentative dates from May second, twenty twenty-five through June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, is recommended by the director of PPS and the superintendent.
I'll move second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve Josh Budlong as a volunteer basketball coach, along with two additional spring coaches for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Approval is contingent upon sufficient participation and is recommended by the athletic coordinator and the superintendent.
Move, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Need a motion to approve the addition of Jody McNamara and John Trobridge to the substitute list, is recommended by the administrative team and superintendent.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Need a motion to approve the recommendation of the committees on special education and preschool special education?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion would be an executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Need a motion to accept the following, following monetary donations with sincere appreciation and to increase the budget by these amounts, is recommended by the business manager and superintendent. The First Baptist Church Deacons Fund, Hamilton Emerald Foundation, um, for three different initiatives, and um, the First Baptist Church Deacon Fund again.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you so much, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Seven point four, policies and regulations, I'll, first readings, I'll turn over to Sonner Corey.
Uh, we have a number of policies for first read. Looking for my notes, um.
We'll probably see a lot coming through in the next few months.
Yeah.
We're uh working with NISBA to update our policy manual in general, so there's gonna be quite a few updates. None of these seventy significant changes in the way that we operate, but all help us comply with the, with the laws uh that are, that are there.
Um, I'll just read through the titles, cause I, I've lost my notes here, so, um.
Yeah.
Accounting of fixed assets and inventories will replace the current inventory's uh policy. Um, that, I, I, probably the most significant addition there is uh just the GASPY um uh compliance, uh, that will be, we're following. Uh, fifty-one oh two is participation with the uh uh for registered opioid overdose prevention program, um, that's just updating, uh, just, um there's the current policy, that just minor updates, um. Fifty-six sixty-two is the food service program and meal change policy, um. Uh, no significant changes there, uh, either, uh, seventy sixty-eight, uh, limitations on use of physical restraint. Um, that I believe is a new policy.
Right.
Um, provides uh guidelines on uh physical restraint, uh, um, in, uh, cases of emergencies. Uh, seventy-one oh one, uh, concussion management, uh, also very minor changes, uh, seventy-three hundred immunization of students, um.
This is, uh, that policy was previously grouped with the dental health policy, and then those have been separated out to be more, to make them each a little clearer. So the um dental exams now is with the student health and dental exams policy. So making sure it do not, uh, updates its compliance with the, with the legal requirements.
So that's uh student health and dental health, and that's seventy-three oh one, and then the last one is eighty-five hundred special education programs and services.
Any questions on any of that? Thank you guys for all your hard work on that, this is great. Um, I need a motion to approve the Art and Art History Department trip to New York City from April fourth to fifth, twenty twenty-five, with lodging in New Jersey. Is recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent. Approval is contingent upon meeting all administrative planning and funding requirements. And the Board of Education reserves the right to cancel the trip if student safety concerns arise.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a great trip.
It does, I wanna go.
Yeah.
Wrong.
You're right.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to approve Hamilton's participation in the following combined sports program for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, is recommended by the athletic coordinator and superintendent. Uh, modified in varsity field hockey with Morrisville Eaton and tentatively two students.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck, Chris.
All right, brings us to eight point one, superintendent's report.
So there's two state level updates I'd like to provide you in addition to my written report. Um, Governor Hochul has unveiled her plan to restrict smartphone use in schools statewide. I just wanna go over some of the talking points and some of the um bullet points that'll be included in that initiative. So the proposal will, will restrict smartphone use in K through twelve schools throughout the entire school day, so it'll be bell to bell. Schools will have flexibility to create their own implementation plan. No unsanctioned use of smartphones and other internet-enabled personal devices on school grounds in K through twelve schools for the entire school day. That includes classroom time and other settings, including lunch and study hall. So they will have to be away the entire day. All schools are, develop their own plans for storing smartphones during the day, giving administrators and teachers the flexibility to do what works best for their buildings. It requires schools to give parents a way to contact their kids throughout the day if needed, so making an area in an office or some centrally located space in the building that kids can go through throughout the day if they need to contact their parents. That'll be in the plan. The governor's proposal also clarifies that students would still be authorized to have access to simple cell phones without internet capability, as well as internet-enabled devices officially provided by their school for classroom instruction, such as laptops or tablets used as part of lesson plans. Additionally, the governor's proposal includes several exemptions to the smartphone restrictions, including for students who require access to an internet-enabled device to manage a medical condition where required by a student's IEP or for other academic purposes such as translation purposes. So those will be exceptions to the, to the rule. Um, the new requirement will be in place starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and would apply to all schools and public school, at, in public school districts, as well as charter schools and BOSsies. So it'll be a broad brush.
Sorry, when did you say?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, so starting next year. So that, those are, um, the developments with the cellphone policy, it's on the floor right now to be approved by both the Senate and Assembly. But she, uh, the governor is allocating thirteen point six million dollars, or thirteen point five million dollars in funding to be made available for schools um, for purchasing storage solutions, um, and help them with this process. So more to come on that, um, but it is moving forward, so I wanna start talking about that, putting out information to parents that that is coming.
So do you foresee any um increase in IEPs for this purpose?
Uh, potentially, I think you could see some medical exemptions, um, for students um that need to have contacts, um, for um some medical conditions. Yeah, yeah.
Is it, so it's pretty clear if there's a, a learning difference that an IEP would cover that, but this translation need, what's the, who's deciding when the need arises for translation?
So if you have an ELL student that needs a translation service, um, they can use their cellphone for that. Um, we provide that, um, on our internet-enabled devices, so I don't know what that would look like, um.
So if we have, if we have any devices, that might be sufficient for them to not have to need a, their own device.
Yeah. Yes.
But it would be maybe an ENL teacher that would decide if that student actually needs it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that'd be through that process, yeah.
And I think there'd have to be a discussion with the monitoring of that too, because if you have certain students that are enabled to have them, then there's gonna be other students that are like, oh, let me use your phone, let's do this, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Hopefully, the guidance will have, will be specific enough to kinda guide us through the process, um.
Yeah.
But the initial conversation is it's going to be left up to district control, which is a good thing.
Yes.
But, um, I hope there's some more clear guidance that's forthcoming for us to move forward, to provide to parents.
Maybe since there's funding, you could ask if some of it could be used, you know, to use in a, like maybe a garage size area, a bus garage size.
We could put up storage devices out there, yeah, that'd be perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Charging stations.
Yeah, yeah, charging station.
Yeah.
Um, do you, have any sense of what the, how, how much of those funds would be able, available to us?
Well, that's statewide, so seven hundred districts, about maybe two thousand dollars per district, not a lot.
Which the one, the, the one storage device we have for middle school.
Yeah.
How, what was the cost of that?
They were inexpensive, so we have four little storage containers that we got off Amazon that are working great. They're locked and kids are doing a super job, um, following those procedures, so, um, you could do it inexpensively. A, a lot of schools are moving to these yonder pouches, they're called, they're magnetic pouches. I would not recommend we move in that direction, they're costly, there's a yearly um fee to those, and they're easily bypassed. Kids are putting in dead phones and keeping their live phone on them. So they're crafty.
Um, does this address the smart watch, I mean, we didn't address that.
It does, all, all devices, yeah, yeah.
That counts. So maybe that's something to start, at least in the grade levels that we are strict in, it might be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Think about that.
So we've talked about that at cabinet level, and so, I think we're seeing more of that at the elementary level than actually at the secondary level.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions on cell phones? Um, the only other update, um, I had a long conversation yesterday with one of the senior councils from State Ed about the new APPR plans and the new STEP plans, as they're called. Strong recommendation from the state, they are formulating some, some exemplars and some template plans, and putting together some guidance to provide to districts. That's probably not gonna be out until later in That's probably not gonna be out until later in the school year, so there's strong guidance from legal counsel at State Ed saying hold off. So we, we have talked about this in our meetings with the HTA, you know, we met last year, uh, we started to meet this year and we mutually agreed that. Absent of the guidance to hold off, um, he actually advised to put a plan in place that would be implemented in September of twenty six. Because they're so behind on getting guidance approved by the state. So we, we have some of the guidance, um, there's a lot to it. New rubrics, new evaluation plans, um, so we're gonna pause and just slow down and move through this, um, at a slower pace. So we put together a plan that works really well for us and meets the needs of the district as far as evaluating teachers and staff. And that's in alignment with their council's recommendation as well, so. So just wanted to give you those two updates.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? Um, administrative reports. Any questions?
Questions, thanks for all your hard work. Yeah, thank you.
Um, eight point three athletic report. I think it's with that. Move into eight point four, business manager report.
Excuse me.
Budget update. We think we're close to having our allowable tax levy finalized and ready for supplemental to the comptroller's office by the March first deadline. Um, it looks like our allowable tax levy increase for twenty five, twenty six is gonna be four point two seven percent. Again, this is within the two percent tax gap. The statewide rate of inflation, calculated rate was two point nine five percent, so I think this is the third year in a row now that that rate has been in excess of two percent. However, we're limited, uh, the cap at two percent is that starting baseline. We did have some pretty significant tax base growth, so that's physical additions to the tax base. That equates to a little over a one percent. So two percent additional roughly one point four five percent, um, based on new tax base growth. So really, in terms of new, um, new monies to the tax base, that's not tied to any other referendums. It's just over three percent. About one point two percent of that, two, four point two seven would be the last increase based on this last building project and debt issue. We'll pay off our last, um, short-term borrowing, principal and interest payment in July and shift to long-term financing for this recently completed capital project. So, um, in terms of operation, um, really it's about three percent. As far as new monies to the tax levy, that one point two three percent that's tied directly to the capital project, principal and interest payments. And bus borrowings, those are things that are approved by taxpayers by December referendum, that's, that's sort of something, so the total is about four point two seven percent. Foundation aid, I don't think, even that, since the executive budget proposal was released. Included in that for, for HCS for next year, a two point one four percent increase in foundation aid, which is about eighty thousand dollars. But caution you, if you recall last year, um, we budgeted an anticipated increase of three percent, which we didn't get, we were hold steady, so. Essentially on paper, from budget to budget, what we budgeted at two point one four percent is actually a slight decrease, so. Not good news for us in the, in sets of foundation aid, um, it's, it's an increase of eighty thousand dollars over two years. If you think back prior to this year, there was, um, a whole harmless provision along with a minimum aid increase for every school district. This year there was not that minimum aid increase that we have been counting, so. That was helpful to assume that, to get things balanced and get things moving forward for this year, but we're not receiving that revenue. So that's something we've had to manage this year. The challenge is gonna be with that, um, as it always is for us, is, is our advocacy efforts. The general feeling around the state is, is positive with regard to, um, education funding. The total package in the governor's proposals increased about four point eight percent, the total spending on public education, five point nine percent in foundation. So, um, there were two main components from the Feller Center's recommendations that were implemented by the governor. They both, they dealt with poverty measures. It did help Hamilton because in the governor's run, there was a whole harmless provision and a minimum two percent increase. So anybody under the new formula, with the tweaks to the formula that wasn't getting two percent, was held harmless and given a two percent increase. Anybody getting more than two percent, the formula is true, so for years, probably ten years, under the existing formula, we were overfunded. And held harmless. So those new measures helped us, but really comparatively didn't help us a whole lot, so we're at two point one four, which if we'd been held harmless, we would've ended too anyway. So it's gonna be a major challenge, um, there are districts around the state that are getting significant increases. Not really sure, at first glance it looks like, um, places that have had an increase in enrollment or that have, uh. More significantly poured, I guess, um, with the new measures, so that's gonna be a challenge. With that, with those, with the minimum increase in foundation aid, we know that the budget process is gonna be challenging again, so. It's time for us to really dive in and, and see what we can do. We have three budget coffees scheduled, the, the next one will be March sixth, nine AM and five PM. So at that first budget coffee, I encourage members of the public to come, that's where we're really gonna dive into things wide and doubts and we're really gonna start talking about where we're going, so. That's sort of our budget update.
Nope.
Jeff?
No.
It's gonna be, I, I mean, it's, it's kind of the same old story, even with the changes to the, the, um, so. Uh, just two other quick updates, electric bus update. We've finally been assigned a project manager at NYSERDA, so, um, I think for two months now, I've been updating and just saying we've been waiting. I think when NYSERDA kinda opened the, um, the, the eligibility for their funding. With a lot of schools that were eligible, so they, they had quite a backlog. So we have been assigned a project manager, so the next step is a, a meeting with the rep from NYSERDA, our project manager. And a rep from Polera, which is the company that's gonna be doing our electrification stuff, so. That is when we're gonna start to find things out, like you were asking, so as far as our, our load and our infrastructure, if we're able to accommodate, so. Hopeful that starts to move a little bit quickly now, it's kind of a waiting game last couple months. The last piece, and this is really good news, um. We just completed our, we just had a full audit and a full review of our, um, our SFA review under, of our NYSIF State Ed, which is our school food authority. So a full review of our cafeteria and our operations. It's really a multi-month process, a lot of it is done remotely, it's sort of a desk out of format, on my end, the fiscal end and the purchasing. But then they actually come out, they have two representatives from SEB that come to the district and spend the day with Andrea. And monitor her production of meals, distribution of meals, and operation of, of our food service department. Uh, they were here last Tuesday and they knocked it out in part, so we did receive our report. There are a couple of minor corrective actions we have to take, and it's really just administrative stuff as far as where we have things posted and how with certain language, but. Very, I think very quickly in the process and during the visit, the representatives made a comment that it was clear to see that we go above and beyond. Our food service plan to take care of our kids, so. I know she's not listening, but being Andrea Cass and her crew at our cafeteria, um, it's great news, they did a great job. It's stressful for them, you know, there's just this idea of being reviewed and having audits, it's, it's a lot on them, but they, they did a fantastic job. So I wa- I wanna thank them, I wanna thank Bill, Heather, Chris, Kevin, Mark, everybody, our faculty and staff and you folks for your continued commitment to. Take care of the kids in the cafeteria, and we, we've always made it a priority to make sure our kids are fed and taken care of. It's nice to know that we're gonna, um, have the authority, we, and the oversight from SEB recognize that. That's good news.
Hope, thanks for that.
Hi, thanks Matt.
Sure. Thanks Matt.
Morning, we will not have a student board member report, um, due to an athletic context. Uh, moving into eight point six, knowledge sharing, elementary steering committee.
We just, yep, we met today and, um, kinda depending on, um, we've been discussing, I guess, the past two meetings. Um, this proposal that we are putting a grant proposal together, we, Ms. Thomas is doing most of it. So lots and lots of research and time and effort on her part to put this together is from, um, CNY Community Foundation. Um, for the cafeteria, which we've been talking about, and we talked a lot at the elementary steering committee last year also about the noise in the cafeteria. Um, and then getting alternative seating for the cafeteria and some big long tables where everybody has to shout down the table, getting round tables that kind of. Kind of everything that, that we're proposing in the grant is with a, an SEL ones, like making sure that kids can have conversations in these round tables to kind of, um. Promote better dialogue and quieter voices, hopefully, see, but also some sound mitigating, you know, baffles or clouds. Um, so, um, Heather got together, you know, three quote quotes for the furniture, three quotes for the, the acoustical panels. And so we're going out for, um, a grant that's due February twenty eighth, and, um, we'll see how that goes, but it's a lot of work that, that she put in, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all that, yeah.
Good job, Heather.
And, um, oh, and last month we met with, also with secondary, I think that we hadn't met, um, prior to that, and they kind of, um, echoed the same concerns that the elementary students had. With it being loud, there was a student representative from the steering committee that was on, that, that voiced her opinions on, on that, so. It's, you know, this, this proposal, even though it's kind of being spearheaded by elementary steering committee, is really to benefit the whole K through twelve. Cause all the students use that lunchroom, and, um, it's kind of, you know, it could be a really positive thing to, to be kind of a community space for everybody.
And if we're fortunate to be awarded that and we move forward with a capital project, we'll work in collaboration with our architects.
Yeah.
On some of the acoustic work and make sure that that can be carried over into the project. And I know Heather has, has talked to one of our architects, um, about that.
Yeah.
And making sure that it's not, we're not gonna spend money off this grant, that then it's gonna be taken down and not used again, so.
Right. Right, I think all of the, the clouds and things that she, that, that she got quotes for can all be reused if they need to be.
Yeah. Yeah.
And as well as the furniture, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
So it's exciting, yeah.
Thank you.
So it's not here for secondary, um, so inclusivity committee.
We split the, this is the second, I mean, the code of conduct, I think, having that group look at it has been really helpful in providing some.
Excuse me. Mm-hmm.
Vision and some, you know, maybe some gaps or some more clarifications on what the policies are, are gonna be and make sure that's. Spill that in a way that people can understand really well.
Yeah, they focused a lot on sort of having it be, uh, measurable and communicative to, uh, the community, um, and not so sort of policy bingo-ish. And, um, yeah, they were very, very thoughtful, uh, to go through each of the sections to give feedback on, on the whole thing, so. Yeah, a, a big thank you to that group and everyone who, the community members who, uh, c- continue to show up for that meeting.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, now it's with your team.
It is.
And then it'll be the next step, probably go to the policy, public comment and.
Public comment. Policy committee, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Policy committee, looking at it at the same time, right?
Yeah, we've gotten some terrific feedback from both the steering teams and the inclusivity committee, um, that will really help us shape that document into a document that really works for everybody. And we have decided at, as a cabinet, to do a plain language, um, version of that will be at our handbooks. So the elementary handbook and then the secondary handbook, which has like dance policy, um, cellphone policy. Just specific, um, language to each building will be the plain language, which I think makes a lot of sense.
Will the plain language also be posted on the website a lot more?
It will, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's what we've done.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you for your work on that. Um, advocacy. Yeah. Um, Michelle and I both attended the virtual capital conference, that was, I mean, it was insightful, I feel like we're kind of hearing the same things from, in many different, um, platforms. Uh, I did just get the recording like an hour before this meeting, if anybody would like that, it's like five hours long, if you'd like it and can sort and sift through. Uh, I did not attend lobby day yesterday in Albany, Bill and I had a brief conversation and we just felt that Hamilton is very unique in its own way. And this was literally set up with every single school board, institute, district, and we just felt like it wouldn't be the best use of our time. We would be better off meeting with our respective, um, legislators independently, so we're gonna work on that.
And I will be doing that in early March, I'll be in Albany, meeting with our representatives.
Um, Bill and I attended the SBI legislative forum, so here's the handout that we got there, um. It was a lot, I felt like it was a lot of, um, they kept saying like, yeah, we hear you, but you need to get together with your cohorts and your statewide organizations. And advocate together and band together and, um. I don't think there was anything significant that I heard or that I took from it. Um, the other thing that I'm hearing a lot of is literally, um, we need to just reach out, we all need to be reaching out. And the days of like writing letters and sending emails are, th- those are not being heard, you actually have to pick up the phone and call the legislators. Um, I just found a website, it's called Five Calls, it's been, and this is for anybody, um, it's really, really, really helpful and it. It offers guidance and from what I'm hearing too, some people are like trying to call after work and not getting ahold of anybody. So really just trying to make these calls during the day to connect with people, um, if you do get a voicemail, leave a voicemail because they do listen to it, I mean, don't. The longer it is, they might not listen to all of it, but like short and sweet and, um, some people are getting feedback that they're having some very interesting and powerful conversations. And just, um, what I would ask maybe from like Matt or Bill is even, um, being able to provide us with a sheet of the things that affect us most as a district. So that we have some general guideline and.
Talking points.
Yeah, exactly what we should be saying and kind of like those hot, like buzzwords that they might listen a little bit more for.
When, when you meet with people in Albany, if they're specific to that, that legislature, legislator, that'd be good.
Yeah, 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 those are typically, um, very small groups, like our, our BOCs region will meet with Senator Grifol, Senator Bottingstein, our representatives. Angelino, and, and we'll be one, not one-on-one, but a small group setting with them. And then we have our MO BOCs and OHM BOCs combine i- in meet with, um, Benedetto and Mayor. Um, who are the chairs of the education committee, um, and that's usually, um, we have an opportunity to share our individual concerns with them, which is really helpful.
And maybe that sheet could go to PTO.
Yeah, absolutely, I think getting it out there. One, I guess one note, um, on like the unfunded and underfunded mandates that they had said is, um. Again, they're talking about like getting together, school board, institute, superintendents association, your town board, really getting together, um. And they called it like a mandate relief committee, but they said like basically it includes all of us, and I thought that was kind of like. More to come on this, just really like. More to come on this, just really like call, 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 and call some more. And I know I feel like I've been on repeat a lot, but there are, there have been a lot of different people answering the phones. And they're saying even if the same people, like make them get sick of hearing from you, so make them know your name. So that's all I really have on that front. Phil, was there anything else from the SBI forum that you?
No, it, it was, the people who spoke, it was pretty specific to their individual districts and they, they assigned certain districts to speak. We were in line to speak and then we weren't. So, yeah.
Yeah.
But there wasn't really a lot of information shared, it was, they listened, they agreed.
They did give a couple recommendations, like one of the things that they were talking about was like fund balance. And a lot of time, like in the thing, it says like allow schools to maintain an unrestricted fund balance up to eight percent. And basically, they gave like suggestions that that's never gonna happen. So recommend, like they recommended two percent increments instead of like just going for it all. And then there was like the bid process. They were talking about increasing that and giving more control to districts with that. And they were like, yeah, with all the embezzlement and stuff right now, like don't, don't waste your efforts on that because it's.
Yeah.
It's not really gonna get you anywhere. So I guess that was helpful in a sense of knowing what not to kind of waste your voice on.
There really wasn't a lot of discussion around the foundation aid formula. You know, the Rockefeller Institute recommended thirty changes, they adopted two.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's really, it's, it's really not known what any combination of the other changes would implement that would help us.
Correct.
You know, in, in theory, if they implemented all the changes, it could be detrimental.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, yeah.
Well, is your sense that that's the end of the conversation now? Like we did it, we adopted, or we'll do these two now and then we're.
No, I think they'll, I think they'll continue.
I think so, too.
Yeah, they're just, the Rockefeller Institute didn't have enough time to run the formula through with all those changes because it's very specific, as Matt just said, each individual district, one change in that formula could either positively or negatively affect them. So, you know, with six months or however long they had to put this analysis together, really wasn't a lot of time.
Yeah. That's basically all I had on that front. Eight point eight board update, the boces annual meeting is April ninth at six o'clock. And just let Jody know if you'll be attending. Budget update. So we need to have a conversation of like who can attend which budget coffee because we don't want more than two of us at any of them. So I, I indicated I'm available for all the five o'clock ones, but I don't need to go to all the five o'clock ones. If you don't, do we know when Michelle's available for any of these? Okay. I think I'm maybe one, maybe Amanda put stuff on there.
Yeah, I can, I can look. I did put stuff on there, I can go to one of the morning meetings on a Monday. I can go to any of the five o'clock ones also if you don't wanna go to all three.
I'm just looking to see if Michelle will come on here. No, it's just me and Amanda.
Oh, you, oh, you also, okay.
Are we able to just fill that in as needed? Okay.
Yeah.
So why don't we just plan on doing that here soon so we can figure that out, since the first one's coming up? So we have budget coffees, as Matt indicated, March sixth at nine and five, March twenty-fourth at nine and five, and April eighth at nine and five.
I can, I can go to the morning one on the sixth. On the twenty-fourth, I can't go to either. I can do that one, the twenty-fourth at nine AM.
Okay, I just added those two in there. And then we will need somebody to go April eighth at nine. We do have a couple other spots, so if you guys could just fill that, I think Jody emailed that out to us.
April eighth, I can't go.
And where are those being held?
In the LGI and the SEL room.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
So the nine o'clock ones are in the, in the SEL room, and the five o'clock ones are here.
Perfect. March third petitions will be available for board of education candidates, and please contact Jody Chantel for more information. March eighteenth is how to become a school board member candidate, what you need to know. If interested, please contact Jody. And May thirteenth will be the public budget hearing at six o'clock. This leads us to nine point one, our second community participation. We have like public comments at this time, please remember that the board is not permitted to respond directly to comments made during the meeting. Chris, do we have any comments online?
Just the, let's go to my school.
Okay. All right. I see no one else. Any other motion to adjourn and enter into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to the following? The employment history of a particular person's focusing on probationary and untenured faculty and staff and collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the civil service law for both non-instructional and instructional bargaining units.
We'll move.
Second. All those included?
Aye.
Aye. We'll take five minutes. Thank you all for coming.